Ray Joe, can you please call the roll?
Andy Selhards.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Val Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
He is absent this evening, excused.
Barb Palitski.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? After the pledge, please remain standing for prayer. In honor of the Memorial Day holiday, we'll be led in prayer by retired Lieutenant Colonel Brad Bork.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus Christ, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this governing body. We know that government is established by you. We ask for your wisdom to be upon them. May they govern in benefit of the people, give them wisdom and discretion, civility. Lord, may your grace be upon them. In memory of Memorial Day, Lord, we thank you so much for your protective hand being upon this country through the centuries. We know that our military is mighty, but Lord, it is because of you and your protective hand that has truly blessed this country. We ask your blessing to be upon spouses that are alone tonight because of loved ones that have gone. We pray that you be with fathers and mothers, sons and daughters, aunts and uncles that remain because their loved ones gave the ultimate sacrifice. We thank you for that. May we be a grateful nation in response to that. And Lord, although not commemorated by Memorial Day, we do thank you for our veterans, those actively serving in Iraq, Afghanistan, Syria. We ask your blessing to be upon them. May your protective hand be upon those in the air and on the sea, under the sea, on land. Lord, bless them, protect them, bring them home safely, and may we be always a grateful nation to them. We love you, Lord Jesus, and this we pray. Amen. Lieutenant Colonel Bork served in the Air Force for 19 years. He retired a few years ago with new rest degrees in intelligence reconnaissance. Mr. Bork is a husband, a father of two teenage children, and is currently studying for full-time Christian work. I have the privilege of working with him every single day and am honored that he could be here this evening for our opening prayers. So, thank you, Lieutenant Colonel. Thank you for your service to our nation and our community. We do need to amend the agenda this evening before we proceed, and we are going to add underneath requests an approval to apply for the Community Development Block Grant funding, which you'll hear about momentarily, and this is for the purchase of property at 4747 Tiedemann Road for a total of $50,000.
Move to amend the agenda as stated in the record.
Second. To amend the agenda, Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Val Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky. I'm sorry, Barb Palitski.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
All right, next up is the approval of minutes dated May 14, 2018. Any comments or questions regarding those?
To approve.
Second.
To approve, Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Val Beer.
Abstain.
Barb Palitski.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
All right, next up, we'll have our public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program. As you came in this evening, there was a table sitting in the back. If you have not done so already, we would request before you leave this evening that you please put your name and address on there. Welcome to the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant. Cuyahoga County receives Community Development Block Grant funding each year directly from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The county makes these funds available to the city through a competitive grant application program and allow funding requests up to $150,000. The funds enable provide for city viability by promoting decent housing in a suitable living environments while expanding economic development opportunities. The national object is to benefit low to moderate income persons or to aid in the elimination of blight. Specifically, initiatives eligible include community master plans, infrastructure, streetscapes, community and senior centers, housing and commercial demolition, public safety, parks and playgrounds, and other initiatives as outlined by 24 CFR 570. As part of the HUD requirements to qualify for this grant funding, cities are required to hold a public session. Notice for the public session was publicized last week in compliance with HUD requirements. The county recommends grant application includes comments from residents. So, if you're unable to make tonight's meeting but wish to make a public comment about this subject, please don't hesitate to contact the city's Economic Development Director, Andy Udris, at (216) 635-4289, or by email at audris@brooklynohio.gov, or by mail at 7619 Memphis Avenue. The deadline for the application is June 8, 2018. At this time, I would ask members of the audience not affiliated with the city of Brooklyn to come up to the podium if wish to make a suggestion to the administration on ways this funding should be allocated if granted by the county. Please limit your prepared remarks to five minutes or fewer. All right, then there is no one. I will move on with our council meeting then. Tonight is Finance Director Schaefer's final meeting. He will be taking a position in the state up north that we're not allowed to talk about, all right, Michigan, all right, next month, but he's leaving for the best of reasons, and that's to be closer to family. Dave has only been with us for a couple of years, but in my opinion, has done an outstanding job. I very much appreciate his can-do spirit and his tremendous organizational skills. In his time he's been here, he's streamlined the budget process, he set the wheels in motion to overhaul the finance software, and has sought numerous ways to reduce expenses in the city. I'm happy for you, Dave. I pray God's blessing in your new position, but you will be missed here in Brooklyn. So, thank you for your hard work for the residents of the city of Brooklyn. In Mr. Schaefer's absence, Val Harry will be working as the interim finance director. Val comes with tremendous amounts of experience, and I know she'll aptly provide the services needed as we find a permanent replacement. So, Ms. Harry, welcome, and thank you for stepping in. We'll now proceed with our council meeting. At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience is going to say the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Just like to advertise again for the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation. The ride coming up is the Cleveland Ride for Kids benefiting the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation. It's a motorcycle ride. It's escorted by Police and Sheriff Department. It's on June 10, 2018, at the Independence Firehouse Soccer Field at 6354 Saleig Drive, Independence, Ohio. Registration is from 8 to 9:30. The ride starts at 10:00 a.m., rain or shine. It helps find a cure for childhood brain tumors. You can register today at rideforkids.org/cleveland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ardito. Okay, we'll then move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We begin this evening with the Domestic Abuse Commission. Councilman Ryan Shaki.
The next Domestic Abuse Commission will be held on June 14 at 6:30 in the community room at the fire department. I hope to see you there as we further discuss missions and plans for the commission over the next two years. If you believe you may be in an abusive relationship and are ready for help, there are resources out there to help you. Contact the Domestic Violence and Child Advocacy Center at (216) 391-4357. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Colser.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals met on Thursday, May 17, heard a request from Williams Suboda for a 48-square-foot variance to the maximum allowable area of storage shed at 10700 bit off-road. That was approved. Request from Matthew Mosley for a 1-foot, 5-inch variance to the minimum 3-foot required for accessory structure, side yard setback. This is for a garage located at 4582 Forest Edge Drive. That was approved. We had a request from Ron and Kim Payalawa for 19-inch height variance. This was for a fence that is parallel to their home in the side yard at 10314 Manoa Avenue. That was approved. And the final request, which was approved, was from Ben Dariano of WD Partners. This was for 13 sign variance to the maximum of one sign that is permitted per building face at the Walmart at 10,000 Brook Park Road. The next scheduled meeting was escaping me, but will be on June 21st. That's going to be Thursday, the 21st, 6:00 p.m. here in the Brooklyn City Hall conference room. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Colser. The planning commission meeting that was scheduled for June 7 at 6:00 p.m. has been canceled due to no applications being filed. The next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, July 5 at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room. All are welcome to attend. We'll now move on with Economic Development. Councilman Selhards.
Thank you. This meeting, this evening, the Economic Development Committee met at 5:45 p.m. in the conference room. One of the items on the agenda was to review and approve a letter of solicitation to TRG Studios, Inc. for the relocation creation of 35 jobs and $2.9 million in annual payroll. Currently, TRG is a company located in Cleveland, Ohio, with 26 employees. Through this whole process, they're thinking of coming up with an additional nine employees. Current payroll is from $2.1 million. It should grow up to $2.9 million. With the relocation of the 26 existing jobs and nine new jobs, estimated payroll will be for the three years is $2.9 million. There's renovation of approximately 56,000 square feet at a cost of $1,160,000. With this, the Economic Development Committee approved a tax increments, job retention creation agreement with the company for 30% for the first, second, and third years. 30% of the first year is estimated to be $15,750. 30% of the second year is estimated to be $18,750, and the third year is estimated to be $21,750. TRG is going into one American way. There's also the possibility of their 56,000 square feet being eventually moved into with an additional 14,000 square foot expansion. One of the other items talked about was for the 2018 capital budget amendment was a request for $410,000 for future land acquisition to be discussed at a later date. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Selhards. The Finance Committee did meet this evening prior to the council meeting at 6:30. Those meetings are always before council meetings. Everyone's welcome to attend. I will go over new items on the agenda and those that will be voted on this evening. Oh, I apologize. I missed somebody. I apologize. Skip right over you, Mrs. Palitski. We'll get to mine in a second. We'll move on with the School Board Liaison, Councilman Palitski.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk.
Sorry about that.
Last week's school board meeting, resident and school parent Mike Chingere requested that additional training of special ed teachers be considered by the school board. He suggested that additional training for dyslexic students is available. Commendations for the HPAK or health programs. This is the third year of participation for Brooklyn. 11th graders received a grant for studying abusive relationships, suicide, depression, how exercise is good for mental health. They were awarded Best of Division for their studies. The members were Jared Green, Asme Ramsey, David Dugan, Kiara McGinnis, Katrina Tons, Hunter Majewski, Gabriela Mendez, and Yari Ramos. Congratulations, students. The ninth grade studied Think Before You Tweet, Negative Posts, and Cyber Bully. The Strategic Planning Committee for Safety and Discipline met on May 21, 2018 for the last time this school year. We discussed ways to make the building more secure and how to effectively enforce discipline rules. We will meet periodically over the next five years to evaluate the progress of the committee's suggestions. The track team finished eighth in district finals. The high school roof is 20 years old, and a permanent solution must be found. All ideas for funding will be considered. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palitski, and I apologize for skipping you a second ago. The Finance Committee did meet this evening. I'll go over new items on the agenda and items that are up for third ring adoption this evening. The first three items are requests for approval. The first is to approve a proposal for painting the recreation department swimming pool. The winning bid is for $42,500, and this is significantly higher than what we had budgeted for due to some incomplete information that we were given whenever we sent it out to bid, but the Finance Committee did unanimously recommend that council adopt. The next is a request for approval for agreement with Carbil Salt Incorporated. This is with the Brexville Purchasing Consortium, and this is for our yearly contract for the salt purchases for the wintertime. The price per ton did increase by $6.42 over last year. The consortium is a little more expensive when purchasing the salt, but we're also guaranteed to have the salt. And if you remember a few years ago, when we had some severe storms back-to-back, many of the cities were actually running out of salt, and Brooklyn never ran into that. And so, we do pay a little bit extra to make sure that we do have that. And so, again, the committee recommended that council approve that. And last of the items that was amended to the agenda this evening was the request for approval to apply for the CDBG funding, and this is for a purchase of a piece of property on Tiedemann Road, 4747 Tiedemann, and the total amount that we're requesting for the grant is $50,000. The city may have to kick in a portion of money at a later time, but the grant request is $50,000. And once again, the committee did recommend that council adopt that. As far as legislation goes, the first item that's up for third ring adoption is Ordinance 2018-17, and this is our ground lease with Enerlogics for putting solar panels on another part of what used to be the city dump. Our law director sent an email out today requesting that we defer this to the next meeting. There's still a couple of items that he's working to get worked out with the other parties involved, and so, we did recommend that we defer that to the next meeting. Ordinance 2018-45, these are updating the rental fees for the use of the Brooklyn Fire Station Community Room and the Community Center, and the updated schedule is on the city's website. I read into the record the first time this went around, all the different items that were on that. If you want to see that, it is on the city's website. Then our new business is Resolution 2018-4. This is adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2019. We have to this every year per the Ohio Revised Code. Three items that Mr. Schaefer pointed out that really end this, it just reflects the 5.9 mils of property taxes that the city of Brooklyn collects, and for 2019, we're estimating that to be $1,792,999 that the city will collect in property taxes. The second piece is a schedule of beginning and ending fund balances for 2019. The last item deals with the city's debt that we have. Currently, we have two items that are debt. We have a bond, and we have a note. The bond is for the fire station, and the note is for the, basically, most of it's for the road-on-road project that we did this last year for $1.42 million, and the fire station still stands at $2,725,000. Then lastly is Ordinance 2018-51. This is to amend the annual appropriations. The total appropriation changes that are being requested are $1,125,572. A complete list of all the changes can be found on the city website. Here are some of the highlights. The negotiated contract payroll and roll-up increases are about $283,000. Of course, when we were doing the budget, the contract negotiations were still going on. This change reflects those agreed-upon changes. $96,000 is the increase for the Palmer Regional Dispatch Center for the balance of the year, beginning at, is it August? Is that correct? August, through the end of the year. Also, increased reader-retainer and a possible ODA administration fee. As you've heard, we were party to a lawsuit. The Ohio Department of Taxation will be taking over some of the collection of taxes, and we anticipate there being a higher fee for that, so we budgeted for that. Increased utility expenses of about $50,000. Mr. Selhards just mentioned the proposed economic development purchase of $410,000. That's reflective in here. Another police car for the police department, and also ammunition for the police department at $77,520. And then, another $114,159 for the slope engineering for the problem we have on Ridge Road, the intersection backup batteries for the traffic lights, and also for the packer engine. No, all of those were 114,000. Sorry, I was just clarifying something. For all of those, $114,159. So, the total effect of the general fund is an increase of $500,990. The total impact is $1,125,572. Now, that's a lot of information, but the entire piece of legislation is on the city's website if you'd like to go and look at all the changes. And that is all for finance. At this time, we'll move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Mr. Selhards.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Thank you to all the people that came out yesterday and participated in the parade, and also a bigger thank you to all those people that have served, the military or currently serving. With school out, please be careful on the side streets. Kind of take your time, especially when cars are parked on the side and you have children out in the summer months, and just slow down a second or two. Somebody might be darting out between cars. It's kind of far away, but in August, picnic in a park. Last year was a good event. This year, it's on Saturday, August 18, 2018. Same type of entertainment is planned along with the fireworks. Fireworks were a good hit last year, and the tradition's going to continue. Biggest thing tonight is we actually thank you to Mr. Schaefer. I've worked with him a short time, but it's been fun. I kind of worked with him a little bit on and off beforehand. Very knowledgeable person. Makes, just being here enjoyable. A lot of the things that Mr. Van Kirk said, I wholeheartedly agree with him, and you're going to be missed, but you're a good addition to people up north, too, so, yeah, we'll miss you. That's into my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I hope everyone was able to enjoy the holiday weekend and also take some time to reflect on the true meaning of Memorial Day. I think it can be really summed up by the short phrase that freedom isn't free. The freedoms we enjoy are because some of us, or some, have made the ultimate sacrifice. I was out of town for a couple of days, so I wasn't able to participate in our festivities in Brooklyn, but I know what a huge event is and how much preparation and work it takes. So, I'd just like to thank everyone who helped, whether it was getting ready before. Everything looks great, all the city properties, or if it was helping on that day or participating in the parade, your efforts are appreciated. I would also like to thank Colonel Bork. Thank him for his service and also for being with us this evening. I did attend the budget work session last week, and I'd like to thank Director Schaefer for all the documentation you provided. It was very helpful. And also, again, I wish you all the best, you and your family, in your new adventure up north. I appreciate all your efforts over the past couple of years, and you will be missed. And I'd also like to welcome Mrs. Val Harry as our interim. Mrs. Harry has the perfect background to step in to this interim position, and I appreciate your willingness to step up and help us out. So, thank you. And just a reminder, the Big Creek Cleanup is this Saturday, June 2, and it's from 9 to 12 noon, and our location here in Brooklyn is behind the fire station. Refreshments will be provided for volunteers, dress for the weather, wear long sleeves and pants. Boots or work shoes are recommended. Bags and the work gloves will be provided. Children under 18 must have adult supervision. And I thank you, Mr. Ardito, for all the volunteering you do on behalf of the pediatric brain tumor cause. And I believe that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Val Beer.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. There is currently a bill being considered before the Ohio Senate concerning physician's assistance in the state of Ohio. Physician assistants, or PAs, are medical professionals who diagnose an illness, develop and manage treatment plans, prescribe medications, and often serve as a patient's health care provider. Senate Bill 259, which is sponsored by Republican Senator Bob Hackett of London, Ohio, will make it easier for PAs to practice in Ohio and improve access to health care for patients throughout the state. Right now, there is a very burdensome and basically unnecessary red tape and bureaucratic requirements which cut down the speed and ability to get needed services from physician's assistance. This bill would streamline the procedure currently required regarding physicians and PA's supervisory agreements. This would speed up the time it takes for new PAs to start practicing. Also, right now, a physician may only supervise three PAs at one time. The bill would increase that number to five. The bill would eliminate antiquated provisions in the law and provide for more meaningful collaboration between doctors and their physician assistants. There would also be a streamlining of the process required when PAs from other states want to move to Ohio and begin practicing immediately. Ohio is on the brink of a physician shortage. According to recent studies, Ohio would need to add about 700 primary care physicians by 2030 to maintain the status quo, and PAs can be part of the solution. Right now, there are more than 3,000 physician assistants in Ohio. The proponents of this state bill, that 259, would help improve the quality of care for patients in Ohio by amending and replacing outdated laws and regulations to better allow doctors, physician's assistants, and other providers to decide what is best for their patients. I'd also like to thank all those veterans that served us in the armed forces. I come from a family where my husband's a Vietnam vet, and my father was a World War II vet. You don't see too many World War II vets like you do, you used to see, and it's becoming very rare that you see just a couple of them. Also, with the Vietnam vets, that's becoming quite rare, too. They're getting older. But I do know, and I can tell you, that there is camaraderie among veterans, and I see it all the time with my husband. I'm not very fond of the hat he wears, the baseball hat, that has the 25th Division and some sort of lightning rod on it, but I will tell you, every time we walk through an airport and he's wearing that, people salute him, people make a comment, and it's quite heartwarming for him, and I think he enjoys it, so I don't say too much. And also, he is TSA-approved, so we just walk up and go through the line. So, I always say to my husband, whatever happens, keep that hat. I may need to wear it. So, I do thank all the veterans for all their wonderful service. So many of them do suffer from post-traumatic stress, and it's something that's tremendous. And I only wish the best for the vets because they've given up so much, especially the young ones. I only wish the best also for Mr. Schaefer. He's a kind and gentle man and very knowledgeable. I never talk very much to you and ask you too many questions, but you were so informative, and I wish you and your family only the best. And I also wish congratulations to all those that are graduating now on different levels of education. My daughter just graduated two weeks ago from pharmacy school. I don't like to brag, but I'm very proud of her and happy that she finally got through. And I wish all of those that graduate good luck and a happy future. And that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Palitski.
Everybody's almost said everything, but there goes. Yesterday was the hottest Memorial Day in recent history. That didn't stop Brooklyn from its tradition of participating in the parade and ceremonies at Veterans Memorial Park. Many organizations, Boy Scouts, church groups, bikers rode and walked the route from the school to Veterans Memorial Park. Residents sat in sweltering heat along with many of their dogs to watch the parade. Thank all of you. We appreciate your participation. Many residents followed the parade and gathered in Veterans Memorial Park for the ceremony. Mayor Gallagher read the names of those residents serving our country and asked any family member present to stand behind the flag of that branch of service. She then read the names of those residents who gave their lives for our country. I'm proud to live in a city that will never forget those who serve and those who gave their lives so that we can be free. And I didn't put this in my report, but I would like to mention, there still is one more World War II veteran that I'm aware of. My brother Fran was in the Second World War, and he will be 97 on July 27 this year. Still hanging in there. I would like to also thank our service department for all their work in sprucing up the city. Dave Schaefer, I'm going to miss you. I'm sorry that you're leaving, but our losses Michigan's gain and your family's gain. Summer is here. Please remember to drive more carefully. Our children are out and about, and sometimes they don't
Our children are out and about, and sometimes they don't look out for cars. This was something that Luke Changieri would always remind us of at the May council meeting just before the children left school for the year. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Politzky. Next up is Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Dave, or not Dave, sorry, Kevin Butler, who met with me as I'm making my rounds for all the departments. And also thanks to Dave for your service to Brooklyn, and I wish you guys the best of luck. And finally, the Housing Expo was last week, the first annual in the city of Brooklyn. I think it was very successful. I was out there for a little while and saw residents coming and going, and it was a great one-stop shop to get information on utilities and housing updates and from the building department. And so, thanks to Mr. Kolsar and Dawn, who I know put a lot of work into that. I think it was a great asset to the residents of the city. That ends my report.
Thank you. I also want to thank those that were involved in the parade yesterday, the ceremony. God certainly gave us beautiful weather. We complain all winter long about it being cold, and then whenever it gets hot, we complain about that, right? But I was very grateful. I love the hot weather. I'll take it all year round. But I am grateful for that. I am honored to be a part of a ceremony where we can, we can honor those who pay freedom's ultimate price. Nearly 1.2 million people have died in service of this country. The population of Cleveland is about 400,000. So you take that, multiply that by three, from the Revolutionary War up until our current, our current war on terror, 1.2 million men and women have died. And so, one day really is inadequate to thank them, but I certainly thank the mayor and her administration for making it a priority to celebrate their, their lives that they, that they lived and also the sacrifice that they made. And it was really an honor being there yesterday. I just want to let residents know that I will be absent for our next meeting. Every year, our first meeting in June falls on the same week that our church has their annual youth camp in the state up north, in Michigan. And I've had the privilege of serving at this camp now for 17 years. It's hard to believe, but 17 years. And I'll be serving there once again as a camp counselor for that week. And so, Mr. Selhertz, who is the council pro tem, president pro tem, will be running the meeting in my absence. And so, that is why I will not be here at the next meeting. I just wanted to, we got an email from Mr. Verba today regarding the schedule for road construction. And so, I just wanted to let residents know kind of what's going on. The first street that's going to start is DeLora, and that, they're scheduled to actually start on the 31st of May, which is that Friday, I believe, if that's correct. And that will go until July the 13th. And then Torrance Avenue, the north side, will start on June the 8th and will conclude on June the 29th. The south side will begin that same day, June the 29th, and will finish up July the 25th. Then Orchard is slated, on the north side, slated to begin July 25th and end August 15th. The south side, begin August 15th and end September 13th. Then Southwood, the area north of Bidoff and also South Amber, is slated to begin July 27th and end August the 18th. And then after all that's finished, the final asphalt coating for Torrance, Orchard, Southwood, and South Amber will be laid the week of September 14th, the 20th. Again, these are just, this is just the schedule that the, that the construction folks have worked out with us. Of course, weather has a lot to do with that. But, so, starting on Friday, the construction barrels will be out, but the end product is always well worth it. So just wanted to inform residents of that. And lastly, I did want to thank Mr. Ardito again for his work with the Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation. I mentioned last time, a little girl in our church that was suffering from this, and she is doing very, very well. And she is improving every day, two steps forward, one step back. It seems like a lot of times, she's been in the hospital off and on since October of last year, and she hasn't left the hospital since March of this year. She is now, I think, nine months old. But if everything continues, she's been in and out of the PICU, but if everything continues to go well, she should be able to go home next month. And so, I thank you for your work there. I really appreciate that. It really means a lot also in regards to what's been going on with my friend's family. So, that's all that I have, and with that, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank all the residents who came out yesterday in the very hot weather to celebrate the members of our military who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our nation. It was great seeing much of the community involved yesterday, and I want to give a special thanks to John Kelly, the VFW, American Legion 469, the Boy Scouts, Brooklyn Marching Band, and the city council members who were able to attend the service yesterday. I also want to thank all the employees who put so much work into making sure that the city looks great for our annual event. Tonight, I also want to say a big thank you to Brooklyn's part-time athletic director and teacher, Ryan Kalber, who will be moving on to Cogga Heights full-time this upcoming school year as their full-time athletic director. Ryan was a terrific mentor for the children here in our school system. I've known Ryan since kindergarten at St. Thomas More, and he's always been genuine, honest, and a true advocate for the Brooklyn community. He served the Brooklyn schools for 12 years, six of those years as the athletic director. Ryan was the head coach of the hockey team, earning 71 wins, two division titles, the Greater Cleveland High School Hockey League Coach of the Year for 2016-17. He served one year as assistant football coach and four years as the head softball coach, earning 39 wins, and named the 2010 Pac softball Coach of the Year. Ryan also serves on our city recreation board, and I know we're going to still see Ryan around in our neighborhood, but I really want to congratulate him on everything he's done for this community and this great opportunity for his career advancement. So, Ryan, congratulations. And lastly, I want to say one last thank you to Dave, since this is his last meeting, and he's leaving us at the end of this week, and please remember us as you're sitting out in your back deck looking at the lake. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with directors' reports. We begin this evening with our rec manager. It's beginning. I apologize. I got evil that you did have one, but I guess you don't have one, so I apologize for that. All right. Next up is our finance director, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor, members of council, and all my colleagues for their support since I started with the city of Brooklyn in August of 2016. I very much appreciate all the kind words and the well wishes I've received. It also feels great to leave the finance department in the capable hands of Val Harry as interim finance director, and as expected, Val has already hit the ground running. The city will close on the notes, the Series 2018 notes tomorrow, Wednesday, the 30th, and I will still be able to sign everything as planned. The tax budget associated with Resolution 2018-4 is in accordance with ORC 5705. The city's 2019 tax budget prepared in 2018 must be approved by the county fiscal office no later than July 20th, 2018. I'm introducing it tonight on first reading, so that tonight can be the first reading, and hopefully two readings in June before council goes on recess, July and August. So if you have any questions about that between now and the end of the week, please let me know. Out of the 2019 tax budget schedule, three is really what the county fiscal office is looking for, and to double-check, the city, Brooklyn is projected to have enough resources available to meet the 2019 debt obligations. And council president Van Kirk kind of detailed all of the increases on the 2018 permanent appropriations. I'm not going to repeat all that, but if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me directly. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Next up is our police chief, Chief Moki.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I just wanted to take a few moments to thank our community corporate members that donated items for the gathering grill after the parade yesterday. Ridge Park Square, Walmart, Giant Eagle, and Frito-Lay all donated the food, chips, and water, and condiments and everything else that we needed yesterday, and I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is our building commissioner, Mr. Kolsar.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Recap of the Brooklyn Home Expo, it was an excellent, an excellent show that was put on, and got to give all the credit, although, thank you, Mrs. Ryan Shaki, but our building department secretary, Dawn Neal, did all the coordination for the event, located and coerced all the, all the vendors to show up that she felt would be needed to bring this together. It was something that really, we get so many questions in the building department that have anything and everything to do with your home, and this was a really good opportunity to have them all together in one place for you. So hopefully, it's something we can do again. I know we had a steady flow of traffic at our building department booth throughout the whole evening. A few projects that are underway I just wanted to touch on. Aldi's is getting an addition put on there. You'd probably see that if you're a frequent shopper there. Looks like they're doing a pretty good job of keeping a safe access into the building for everyone. There's a great showroom, which is being, being put in at 1400 Brook Park Road. This is toward the very edge of town, right next to La Villa. Hampton Inn, raising the roof on their building, redesigning the facade and the roofline of the structure, new lighting and everything, putting a large chunk of money into revamping the hotel. La Casa Tequila just recently opened up at the Old Wild Ginger location behind Cracker Barrel. And Brooklyn Point continues to cruise along, and they're proposing to have an open house for the public to see the areas that are complete in, I think, the next couple of weeks. And they also have a trailer, a sales trailer, on site next to the, next to the building, where you can go in, get information. And one thing on the property maintenance front, that's always continuing on, got through all the grass cutting. It was a very wet spring and summer, so that kept our property maintenance inspector busy. Just something I want to note, you know, a lot of people have complaints. Many times, someone will cut their grass in the front, and for us, that's all that we can see. Though, we're not allowed to just go into people's backyards if someone says, hey, you need to look in their backyard. So if you have a complaint about your neighbor not taking care of something in your backyard, you just need to provide us access so that we are able to see it, and then advise them to take care of it. As always, my phone line is, is available. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kolsar. We're now move on with our legislation. We begin with our request for this evening. I have a letter from, Mr. Verba says, "Dear Mayor, Members of Council, on April 25th, 2018, requests for proposals were received for the painting of the pool at the John M. Quinn Recreation Center." We received two proposals. One of them was disqualified because it did not provide all the information that was required. I hereby request authorization to enter into an agreement with Metropolitan Pools for the painting of the indoor pool at the John M. Quinn Recreation Center in the amount of $42,500. Metropolitan Pools have painted over 400 pools, have been in the business for over 56 years. If this is approved this evening, they're slated to begin their work on August the 13th and will conclude on September of 18th.
Move to award the bid to Metropolitan Pools for $42,500.
Second.
To approve, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Dear Mayor, Members of Council, I hereby request authorization to enter into an agreement with Cargill Incorporated Salt Division in cooperation with the Brexville Purchasing Consortium. The bid opening was held on Friday, May 18th, 2018. After review of the bid results, Cargill submitted a cost in the amount of $58.71 per ton dump delivery and $63.71 per ton piler delivery. This is an increase of $6.42 from what we were paying last year. Per the contract, the city of Brooklyn has to order 80% of its estimated quantity. We are entitled to purchase at least 2,240 tons of salt at 58.71, which equates to $117,120.60. There is an exception, exception in the contract in which Cargill agrees to supply each city with the awarded quantity of product up to a maximum of 140% of the estimated quantity. The city of Brooklyn's estimated quantity is 2,800 tons, which means we could order no more than 3,920 tons. The city has never ordered that much salt in one contract year. This agreement will be in effect as of November 1, 2018, through October 31 of 2019, and the, the documents are attached with it.
Move to authorize entering into the agreement with Cargill.
Second.
To approve, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
And the last request is what we add to the agenda this evening. This is an approval to apply for the community block development grant funding for the purchase of 4747 Tiedemann Road for a total of $50,000.
Move to authorize applying for the grant, CDBG grant.
Second.
To approve, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-17, authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease with Enerlogic Solar for the development, design, installation, and operation of a solar-powered electric generation facility on a portion of land located at 9400 Memphis Avenue. And we're, like I mentioned before, the law director has asked that we defer this to the next meeting.
Move to defer to the June 11th meeting.
Second.
To defer, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-45 is up for third reading and adoption. Excuse me. Amending ordinance 2016-83, establishing rules and regulations and rental fees for the use of the city of Brooklyn Fire Station Community Room and the community center. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bell Bear.
Yes.
Bart Politzky.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.